Or trees than they had applicants. And I was like, oh, my gosh, well, in Camden, we have like all these people that would want to plant trees, but it's so expensive. And so BD's idea of having either a town nursery or I think maybe just exploring, sharing the program with Rockport or something, because there's no reason it needs to cost to plant six trees. It was like $2,700 or something crazy.
That seems crazy.
And so I don't, I think there's already a system in place. The Conservation Commission is really supposed to be the...
Okay, then, that's, I wanted, I'm trying to figure who to task with it.
I'd go through Roger. Talk to Roger about it.
Okay.
Because they've, and it's sort of been, Nancy's mentioned in the past, too, that, you know, originally, the Conservation Commission was supposed to be the Tree Committee.
Well, they are the Tree Ward.
But they don't, they're not like the, the Tree City, you know, overseers.
Why don't we put that on their work?
Why don't you talk to Roger first?
Yeah.
And they were criticized for a while for only focusing on trees, the Conservation Commission was.
Right.
And so I think maybe they've swung too far.
To the other side.
But it seemed like it was a great letter from her.
Yep.
And it makes a lot of sense based on what we're doing. Okay.
As liaison, I think definitely I would support you communicating to the Conservation Commission, but...
I will do that.
Thank you.
And then the other letter was from Meg from Smiling Cow discussing the workshop we had the other day and sort of wondering about the whole big picture. And that's maybe something we should discuss at some point, about, you know, because I'd like to sort of have my head around working all the dams and also tying into, when do we get the work that the state is going to do on the harbor?
September?
Should be October.
October.
October?
Yeah.
Because will that at all tie in with the wall for the library, you know, on Harbor Park and all of that? Will they cover that as well?
They're supposed to be looking at the seawall, yes.
Okay, good.
We just don't know how deep.
Yeah, I mean, they're not going to give us like a detailed engineering design for doing anything with it.
And to this end, we're going to, in the future, select board means we're going to have agenda items on the dams, so it'll be...
I thought Meg's letter was really, really well-written as well, and I just wanted to, you know, thank, you know, those two people, town people, for being involved and writing good product.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Taylor, anything else for you?
Nothing tonight.
Allison?
Yeah, so, two things, I guess. This has been, this is the first select board meeting that I've had since my sister's case was heard in court. And so I haven't, I felt for a while that many of the issues that were brought up with her death on Damercotta Lake are very applicable to Camden and McGonacook Lake and the issues that we see there. But I haven't really felt comfortable talking about it because of the pending case with the DA. And I think that, you know, she was, he testified, or not testified, but gave a report at the beginning saying, you know, he was within, the person that hit her was within 150 feet from shore at dusk, going 25 to 30 miles per hour. Didn't believe that there were any rules about the speed that you could go with a motorboat on a lake, except for in those designated swimming areas that you see that are buoyed off. And, you know, then he went home and looked and saw that, okay, there's this thing called the water safety zone, and that means that 200 feet from shore, there's a law in Maine that says you have to go, you can't go above headway speed. A lot of people don't seem to know this. A lot of people do. A lot of people, especially maybe from other states, don't know it. And the more we have, you know, we've been seeing increased activity on McGonacook Lake. That's issue with the moorings and all of that. It's all a byproduct of, you know, increased use. It's not just the people that have lived there for generations that kind of know the way things are and the way you're supposed to behave on the lake. It's more and more people that are coming and maybe not, maybe not knowing the rules. I think even just with McGonacook, you know, if you look at what 200 feet from shore is, if you're driving along Route 52 and you see somebody with a tuber, you know, pulling a tube or pulling water skis, that isn't, there isn't enough room to be 200 feet from shore. And a lot of the time, I think it's just been an unspoken thing that you have to look. The responsibility is not just always know how far you are away from shore, but just to look carefully and see what's in front of you. But if you're going to have people not looking and also not knowing the laws, last year, somebody got hit with a kayak on McGonacook Lake. She was okay, but, you know, she was hit by a motorboat. And I think that, like, I think there are just a lot of issues that need to be looked at for McGonacook, whether it be buoys that are put out reminding boaters, whether it be information on what the boating laws are at our public launches. I don't want it, you know, to be eventually a tragedy on McGonacook that causes us to say, oh, well, you know, we should have had a marker there, we should have had a marker there. I'm not the expert on what the very best thing to do is, but there are also lakes in Maine that, you know, as we've seen, the town can come up with laws or rules about how we want to regulate the lake, and that's what we're doing with the mooring thing. There are other possibilities where you can restrict the horsepower that's allowed. You could have a speed limit. You could have rules about what can happen after dark. I think our public boat launches are closed after dusk, which makes a lot of sense. But it, you know, it's pretty amazing to have, when you go to a place, like even on Hasmer Pond, where there just aren't that many motorboats, it's really quite a beautiful thing. And when originally there were motorboats that started on McGonacook, you can look back in the old select board meeting minutes, and it was, it was, it came up again and again, people coming to the select board complaining in the '30s and '40s about motorboats being, you know, the motorboat club being on McGonacook Lake. And it was, like, people were horrified. And I think, you know, that whole conversation that we have in town all the time about pedestrians and, you know, bicycles and, you know, the people that use our public spaces while not putting anybody else in danger, pedestrians aren't putting lots of people in danger as much like as cars are. And there's that same conversation that needs to happen with the boats, because part of what makes Camden really special is, you know, the ability to use these outdoor shared spaces. So that, you know, is just something that I would encourage us all to take a look at and come up with possibilities. The other thing would just be a quick response.
Can I ask a question about that real quick? Taylor, you have the inland waters, what do we group? Is that something you can bring up there?
I, it is, yes and no, and I would be reticent at this point to do it, but we have talked about it. At the beginning of the mooring groups meeting, we sort of agreed that we wanted to really limit their scope to just the mooring issue for now. And then we did recognize that obviously other issues would come up in those discussions involving safety, and they have. What Allison was talking about and other things as well. So the way we've kind of looked at it, at least for now, this summer, is focus on the moorings and how we can address that issue, because that's how that committee came to be formed. And then any other safety things that are outside the scope of moorings that come up with that group, put a list together and then present it to Audra and/or the board so we can discuss if we want to have that group work on additional items moving forward or if there should be a separate group formed once the moorings are wrapped up, however that ends. But if there are additional items to be focused on, we'll figure out how to move forward with that, so.
Thank you. Allison, another point.
Yeah, and with that, I do think there's room with the mooring discussion to think about it from the perspective of what makes the lake the safest for, you know, everybody to enjoy. There are people that can enjoy, there are people and their boats that can be out on that lake without creating a major hazard for others. You know, your average kayaker is putting nobody at risk, or even, you know, a non-powered boat that's out on a mooring. I think it would be nice if there could, things could be made easier for the less dangerous vessels and more difficult for the most dangerous.
Yeah.
So, yes, and then the other point would be just about the discussion of weather, the whole river system and the watershed and the system of dams that we have and how, to what extent we can look at each individual dam independently. The river, of course, is a system. It's an ecosystem. It's, you know, part of a larger ecosystem, and when you, you know, eliminate one species, it has an impact on lots of other species. The dams are not part of that in the same way. The dams actually can, and there's a bit of a learning curve with this, it's taken me a long time to wrap my head around it, but each dam has an area of influence, both upstream and downstream. And for our dams, they don't, on McGonacook, they don't overlap. So there is a, you know, you have basically, each dam creates a pool, and then there's an area where there's really no influence from a dam, and then you get to another dam, and then it has a pool behind it of a different size. The biggest pool that we have created by dams is McGonacook Lake. But we've, since the very beginning of this discussion, we've had a lot of people that have said, oh, well, hold, at the first meeting, and we had a Mount Montgomery, we had people here that were concerned about their water levels on McGonacook Lake, because there's this perception that they all kind of work together and that it's kind of, by taking away one dam, you've just like, ratchet the water level down or ability to...
I saw that at the meeting the other day.
And so it's, that, that isn't the case. You can open up that, you know, Montgomery Dam and have it, that gate completely opened, sort of the drain completely pulled, and you will see absolutely no influence any further than the bagel cafe. So this one, and because it's the first dam also in the, in the system, or the one that's closest to the harbor, it also doesn't have, you know, with some of them, if the Norton Street Dam maybe were opened up, you'd have a bunch of sediment that could potentially, and that has happened in the past, it's been, there's been some kind of operator error, and a bunch of sediment has washed down, and you've ended up with a bunch more, like a big wave behind Montgomery and then a bunch of sediment in the harbor. This one, since it's such a small impoundment and it's the one that's connected to the ocean, there are, a lot of it, you can really, even if you were to take the fish conversation out of it, so we may never realize the dream of getting fish all the way back up to McGonacook Lake. I think it's important that when we look at the Montgomery Dam, we say, okay, even, let's look at it with that scenario, even if we can't, none of this ever happens, fish don't get up there, what would we do if we were only looking at this dam? And what the study found is that the dam creates a significant flooding risk that puts a lot of properties in the flood zone unnecessarily and causes them to have to pay higher insurance. The long-term maintenance costs of keeping the dam the way it is, like the status quo, we're looking at over $1 million over 50 years. The reasons to keep it don't, there are many reasons to alter that system, even if you take fish totally out of the equation. So I think that when you look at restoring fish passage all the way to the lake, yes, you do have to really look at it as a system, but here, we can look at the benefits of having that dam or not.
Well, I thought the flood thing was interesting, that...
It is.
It causes more potential flooding.
It is. It does, absolutely.
I mean, yeah, it really, even now with the Main Street Bridge, we're having to look at that.
I mean, that's going to be a huge consideration, because MDOT, right now, they're doing the engineering design work to replace that bridge.
Right. And it's not going to be easy.
I mean, it's going to have, the more that they have to worry about flooding, and flooding's going to, as we all know, it's going to be more and more of a risk in the future because we're experiencing more extreme rain events, the more that's going to have to be engineered to, you know, withstand that if we keep the dam as it is and that configuration as it is.
Right.
So I think that that's, you know, and it's the same thing with any infrastructure in the flood zone that we're responsible for, that private property owners are responsible for. And, you know, flood insurance isn't cheap.
No, not close.
And, you know, and I think it's going to get even more expensive if we're, you know, willingly replacing infrastructure and buildings within a flood zone.
And then, you know, you look at the opportunity to do something now because the seawall is falling apart. We've actually had, in 2005, FEMA gave us a grant to put the seawall back together because the power from the sluice way, from the opening in that dam, actually tore apart the seawall some, and that was already put all back together. I didn't, I didn't even know that. But I just went down there again this last week and looked every time the tide was above 11.9, you see major flooding of that area. I talked to a woman who had been, was in a wheelchair, and she had come through, this was like a few months ago, she'd come through, and it, the water came up, and she realized she was going to be trapped, because there's only stairs on, you know, on one side. So it's, you know, I first saw it years ago when the watershed school put up a picture of those park benches flooded, but, and it was like, whoa, you know, it mostly happens at night, so you don't get a chance to see it as much. But what's interesting there is you can see that when the tide is one inch higher, one inch higher, one inch higher, it makes a really noticeable difference in the amount of the walkway that's, that is underwater. So it's almost like it could be a really cool education opportunity for us. The watershed schools before said, you know, we should be putting markers around town to show people where, you know, with sea level rise at this, at this, at this level. But Harbor Park and the seawall right there, it's this perfect opportunity to see how a little bit of sea level change can make a really big difference. So that's that. Thanks for indulging me in my long talk.
Audra, do you have anything that you wanted to add?
Really quick. So I'm going to the Maine Town and City Managers Association Institute. It's like the conference for all city and town managers in the state of Maine. I've been asked to speak as part of a panel doing a presentation on LED streetlight conversions. And so there's going to be four of us, and they chose four different towns and cities that have approached it four different ways. And so I think we're the one who did it regionally, so.
Well, that sounds, regionally, you're great.
Yeah, we, here in the midcoast, we chose to do it regionally, so.
Interesting to hear if the topic of conduit maintenance, like Mark pointed out, they're dealing with in Portland, comes up during that session.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that is definitely, we have, we do have an area, a street, where that's a problem, like an existing problem.
I don't doubt that.
I didn't actually get a chance to read that article.
It's all underground conduit, and we have that on Rock Brook Drive.
That's the only one?
That's the only one.
That's not too bad.
Well, but that was because, and I think it was the same in Portland, it was a developer that put that in, and then, you know, there's a whole, it ended up a little different, I think, in Portland or South Portland, I remember which. They reverted over to CMP ownership, and here, they've reverted over to town ownership.
Right, right.
So that's another, you know, when developers put this infrastructure in.
When is this meeting, when is it, you said?
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow. Okay, well, we'll look forward to the feedback.
Thank you.
And so you're going to be gone for...
I'll be gone tomorrow, Thursday, coming back Friday.
Okay, cool. All right, as we, I'm going to make a little shift in the agenda, because we have some small ones here being very, very, very good, and I think we should switch to the, as select board, to the consent agenda. There are currently listed three items on the consent agenda. I'm going to move item B, which is the application for the required the village green to an agenda item after this, but we have two other consent agenda items. First is the consideration of a new Vittler license for Molly O'Rourke, DBA, doing business as, Betty Forever, at 46 Elm Street. And the second item is the consideration, the application of the Knox County Housing Coalition to use the village green on November 8th, 9th, 2019 for public awareness raising related to the issue of homelessness in this area. Do I hear any objections to those items?
No.
Then they are hereby adopted. Would anybody, since you came, would like to speak to, which you're more than welcome to do, but it's been approved?
Yeah, let's hear about it.
I have one question in my application.
Yes.
Here, come on up.
Come on.
Sorry.
Okay. Hold the baby.
I just want to first thank you very much for your overwhelming support last year in our first one night without a home. It was hugely successful despite the fact that we had torrential rain and gale-force winds that night. We had more than 30 people sleep out. I did have one local reporter call me up and ask me if we were going to postpone due to weather, and I said that homelessness doesn't go away due to the weather, so no. And my only question was this year, wondering if we could keep our statistic signs in the village green for the week because it's National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and we could accommodate whatever we need to, to make that work. I know last year, we had our sponsors on those signs if we need to take them off for the non-commercial, whatever we need to do. We're just wondering if we could, the statistics are really poignant, and I think it would be nice to be able to have those up, their local statistics about our current population.
I'm very much in support, but I do, there is this, somebody says the word sign in Camden, and everybody gets really nervous and looks around.
Yeah.
And so I think...
Do you have a, I was going to suggest it.
Oh, they'd be attached and where?
Where are they going to be? How many?
They were corrugated plastic. I can bring you samples if you want from last year. They were about the size, like, a little bit bigger than this podium, maybe like this by this, kind of similar to a size of a real estate listing sign, but not a real estate listing sign. And they had wire H-frames that go inside the corrugated plastic, and then they would stick in the ground.
Like campaign signs.
Yeah, but we would be responsible for putting them up and taking them down at the end of the week.
How many?
How many will you let me have? I think we had, I think we had 20 or 24 last year, but we, you know, we could accommodate whatever we, whatever would be appropriate to, you know.
That's, I think one of the things that's important is to, if you can make sure that there is notification that it's for the particular week, the reason they're up there, so people are just going, why are these signs there?
Yeah.
If you make a notice that this is for homeless week.
Yeah, I can put Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, November 9th to whatever seven days later is.
I think we, at minimum, have to eliminate the names of any of the sponsors.
Uh...
Well, it becomes commercial advertising.
You know that Mrs. Bach had the same, she didn't want Harbor Park commercialized in any way either. She wrote it in a letter.
Right, right. But I think we should also think about how many signs and how long.
So we have a process, right, for the signs?
Mm-hmm.
A separate, is that where you're going, Jeremy, or are you just trying to get away?
My ordinance, yes.
Okay. Jeremy's like, I'm out of here.
Listen, let him check on that, and we'll come back.
Wonderful.
You can get back to me. I mean, we know the event is approved, that's fine, and this is just a detail.
Let us work on it.
Sure. I just wanted to bring it and get, do it the right way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? No, not, I want to ask for somebody else. We just also approved the new Victor license for Molly O'Rourke.
I was just going to ask her.
DBA's Betty. Love to hear about the restaurant.
Yeah. So we are excited, I've lived in Camden for six years, and I've run a business out of a home studio doing event design and working in food and really looking forward to actually teaming up with my friend Ariella, who's a local ceramicist, to run a space on Main Street in Camden, and it'd be a little more forward-facing for our community. So we're looking to offer a couple of nights a week that we could be open as a standard kind of small bar and restaurant, and then also offer a little bit of flexible space for private event rentals, special events, especially knowing the kind of crush of summer with private, with the restaurants and everything in the community. So we're really looking forward to it and excited to join Main Street.
I have a question. The application says no stove top cooking.
Mm-hmm.
How are you preparing the food?
We will have an oven. We're kind of doing this on a shoestring, so we're trying to be very smart about it. But we'll be offering lots of salads, using things like rice cookers, you know, things that fall under the parameters of not needing a full hood and hood system.
So...
So kind of a small menu, but featuring a lot of our local farmer friends and good local food.
Great, welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Oh, you should also know about the, that's an area that will be affected by the...
Construction.
DOT sidewalk drainage.
Yes.
Next year.
I've heard, I've heard already.
Which we'll be discussing tonight, but it's next year.
Okay.
It'll be a while.
But like, design stuff, there's a little bit with the sidewalk.
Parking.
Yes.
About it, absolutely.
All right, wonderful.
Good point.
Thank you.
Jeremy, we can hit the sign thing later with them if you want, rather than having to try or search it during the meeting, but we should get, we need to get back to them as to what can be, what can work and what not. So with that said, we're...
We'll figure it out.
Sorry?
We'll figure it out.
I know we will. I'm not worried. So we're going to the item now on the consideration of the application as an agenda item of Patrick Anderson, Jehovah Witness, to use the village green on Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. to hand out informational Bible-based literature.
I have a question about what, when and what are we required to give approval or disapproval for at the village green?
You just hit the nail on the head.
It's public property, so if I just want to go hand out flyers, I don't need to ask anybody.
Audra, it's your stage.
No, and I, I think that this is historically how this has been dealt with, by request of the individual who wanted this on the agenda. I think that when they're there handing out this information, they're approached by members of the public and told that they can't be here. So I think they want to go through this process to just be able to say, we went to the select board and we got approval, even though they, they can be there handing out information without having to go through this approval process. We don't, like, they don't necessarily, for something like this, they have to be given some spot somewhere in town to do this. It doesn't necessarily have to be the village green, but I would suggest that the village green is probably better than most other spots, given that it's out of the way and it's not taking up space on a sidewalk, for example.
So in short, it's less to do with the time periods or the days or the hours, it's more that we're giving, that we're okaying the utilization of a public space for this organization.
I mean...
It doesn't make sense to me.
This is, yeah, I completely agree. It's all very strange.
Kind of, sorry.
No, it's, I mean, it's a, that we give, we give approval for use of the village green because it's about people congregating there for an event. But two people doesn't rise to the level of an event, and they're not selling anything. So it's, you know...
Are we doing this because of precedent?
Yes, it's precedent, and also, like I said, I believe that the applicant, they would like to go through this process because they're frequently approached and told they can't be there.
I, yeah, just to be like, clear, I have no problem with it whatsoever. I feel like it's a little bit of a slippery slope if we start approving things for the sake of approving them that don't require any approval at all. My preference, and particularly, you know, when we start talking about religious-based things that a government body is approving, then that opens up another can of worms, and in this case, unnecessarily, not to say that I think, I mean, there's precedent, so obviously it hasn't been an issue in the past. My preference would be let them know that they have every right to do that, and if somebody approaches them and has a problem, we'd have an officer go by and re-educate the person of the public who clearly doesn't know the law.
Well put, Taylor. What if we just simply authorize you to designate to parties like this that come in what public space they can use?
I mean, I think that it's a matter of, you know, in the past, or maybe, there have been issues like with the yellow ribbons and different things that people have tried to, it, you know, if the town wanted to, if... to, it, you know, if the town wanted to, if collectively we're like, this is a really big problem, that the Jehovah's Witnesses are congregating there all the time, and, you know, you could probably find some, a way to prevent that by saying, you have to be here. But the point is, we're not trying to do that. So, I'd rather, I mean, the Chamber of Commerce, the buses get off there, they unload people, somebody from the Chamber of Commerce, they've got, there are many more of them, sometimes they, I do believe, actually have a cart also, and they pass out tons of flyers. So then it seems like now we have to say that that's allowed and that's allowed, and just like Taylor said.
She said slippery slope.
I think we should just say, make a statement that says, we are, we're not gonna stop people from exercising their First Amendment right there. If it's an ad, when it becomes an advertised event where you're encouraging people to congregate, if I, then that's different, because we need to kind of know about large groups of people, but since this isn't an advertised thing where they're inviting people to come...
I agree with you, except the only one caveat to me is, if we opened up the door to whoever wants to use it without notifying the town, we could have 16 groups out there in one day.
I don't want to be notified, that's the thing, it's...
Well, then, if you're not notified, how can you stop 16 groups from going in?
You get 16 groups there all the time, though, because people come with their kids, and then somebody else is there with, there was like a camp there the other day, and they're playing games with some kids, and...
I guess my, my question is like, is there a really clear line for at what point something becomes a gathering or an event that we would need to provide approval for? Is it like having tents, like structures or signage, like what's the, it's probably a gray area.
It's gray.
Event somewhere, it's like...
It's gray.
Congregating of more than...
If this was on a sidewalk...
Right, they're impeding public...
You'd authorize them to place a table or something on the sidewalk, right? Because you can walk down, anyone can walk down the sidewalk and hand people things and talk to people.
Right.
About anything they want.
Some said, some municipalities obviously have, like, you have to be permitted to have a gathering, right?
Correct.
We, do we have that? I don't think we do, so...
No, not to my knowledge.
Uh, no, there is something about the...
Mass gathering.
If we, if we don't go through the formal approval here, could they can still use it, and they're gonna think they're gonna use it, so is there a big difference here or not?
I mean, I don't, I don't think there is in terms of, I feel like they want this for their own comfort. I mean, I, I don't really think that there is a difference, practically speaking, as to what's going to happen.
It, it just seems like such a non, I like, I have no issue with it, and it seems like it shouldn't even be on the agenda. Go do your thing.
Leaving the cart there would be a different thing, you know, because they do say they've got the cart and a sign, you know, passing through, but it's not, they're just with them.
A sign is not a sign if someone's holding it on.
That's right, that's right.
I mean, we don't stop people with T-shirts, so, yet at least. Goodness.
What if we try to work on, what if you, and I'm just...
Maybe you should, I'm sure everybody's dying to hear.
I'm on this, but what if you just move this one along, and we can work on something for the future on how to better address this?
You have no choice.
Love that idea.
Well, I mean, I think it's all gonna come down to revising the Village Green use policy.
I would agree, I would absolutely agree.
I don't think the Village Green policy...
We may want to look broader in case someone wants to do this down on the landing someday, or anywhere else, you know, someone, wintertime may want to be at the snowbowl and do something similar.
So the Village Green policy says, if any person or group intends to use the Village Green for the purposes of an assembly, group activity, or organized event, then the organizers of any such event or the person responsible for any such event must request permission from the Select Board to use the Village Green for that purpose by submitting a written request, blah, 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 blah.
So this may be an organized...
I don't think that this rises to the level of an assembly, group activity, or organized event.
We need to be able to define what that is.
Exactly.
I was gonna say, what's, what's the definition of organized event?
Exactly.
I mean, this gentleman clearly wants to come on a certain day, it's organized, and it's...
If he advertises it, then that's...
I just don't know what the definition of organized event is.
I mean, maybe we should listen to the...
Peter.
So...
Peter, up here.
Can I come up?
Yes, you can.
So...
Peter, I'll ask who you are first.
Peter Lindquist, I live on Chestnut Street, right across from the Village Green. I feel that this individual is putting too much onus on the Select Board and the town so they can proselytize and say that, you know, we've got the authorization, the blessing of the town, so we're here. Here's another thing you could possibly do if you want to just make this a little bit easier on yourself tonight, just to prove it for Monday, 2:00 to 4:00. I mean, so...
There's still approval, Peter, there's still...
Well, it's, but this ongoing, where, where do, why is this, it's like they're moving into the town green for their proselytizing. It doesn't make sense.
No.
But I don't think they approach people...
Oh, they do when they knock on your door.
Oh, definitely, that's different, though.
Well, I, anyway, that's my opinion.
I mean, I know they approach you, but I don't think they're approaching people. If they were approaching people on the Village Green...
They can be in the Village Green doing this as it is.
So, then, then that's just...
I mean, setting up a stand and a sign is a little different than them standing there talking to people, but they can do that and proselytize all day, every day, if they want to. I just don't want to go down a road where we're talking about whether the Select Board has the ability to approve or disapprove of somebody's right to...
If the Select Board at this moment believes this is not, for the definition is an organized event, then...
It's not fine.
Then we don't need to keep beating it up. They're gonna do their thing, they have the right to do their thing there, and unless we don't want them doing the Village Green, we shouldn't get involved in...
I mean, I, to me, it clearly says that...
I want to throw something out about signs, because he did say about a sign, and the only time you can place a sign on town property is with town Select Board approval.
Right, so he can't place the sign on the property, but he can carry it with him, and it...
You can hold it.
I mean, I don't want to get into saying what he can do so much as saying, this is what we cannot get into. I mean, it's not, it's really not an assembly, group activity, organized event, unless he really wants to make it that, and then...
I mean, anyone can bring a chair and sit down.
I mean...
In, in Village Green.
It says small signs on top of the cart. That's, that's not...
I think it's the cart and the sign probably is the one...
It's, it's small signs on top of the cart, not, it's not a standalone sign, per se. They had the little flyer things that, you know...
It just doesn't rise to the level of needing our approval. I think that should be the message, and...
Select Board is one of my hearings, saying this is not an organized event, we don't need to adjudicate on it, let them do it, let them do what they want to do. All right? Anything else? So, there's no reason to vote anything, so we'll move on to...
I mean, do we need to vote on any, is it helpful?
No, if you want to vote on it, then you have, we can, we've already suggested that we take a look at this going forward as a...
Yeah, I'll look at it.
Yeah, and then we can adjudicate, but we're not, we're not refusing or not accepting.
But I do think that sometimes we get into these things where we kind of just chat about it, and then we say it, and then it's not, there isn't a clear message that can be...
I mean, I, I think you all came up with a pretty clear message, which is that you just, you, you believe that they have the right to do this, and it's not something that...
Right, right.
Rises to the level of needing Select Board approval.
If you already have the legal right, then there's no reason to ask us to...
I, I think that's a clear...
I think it's...
I just hadn't heard from Mark yet, and so, I do think, I always like to kind of get people on the record so that it can't be re, you know, whatever, later.
All right, cool, so...
Litigated.
Relitigated.
So we're gonna revert back to our agenda and talk, and convene as wastewater commissioners?
I'll just say one thing about it, it's, we can't, they're asking almost to legislate because of the ignorance of some other people about their right, and we can't legislate about the ignorance of other people, we can't get into that.
Perfect, now we've all said something. Yeah, I just...
People call me stupid all the time, but anyway...
Minus reflects that we all...
Let's, let's convene as wastewater commissioners.
Ah, I'd like to make a motion, we, we step down as Select Board and reform as wastewater commissioners.
Second.
All's in favor, four, zero, thank you. As wastewater commissioners...
I'm glad I pressed that, because I'm glad, like, I really liked how you put that, Mark. That was...
Think about it for a while.
All right.
The first item is the approval, first item on the agenda here is approval of the USDA loan, is that correct? It's the USDA loan?
Yes, so, so I think this is the first time, this has been said publicly, we're past the gag order period, but we have been approved for one point. I know this is so old news to everyone in here, it's not even exciting at this point, but we've been approved for a $1.4 million grant by the USDA RD for upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant, as well as a $12.5 million loan with a 2.5% interest rate over a 30-year period, but the loan is, it's complicated, but it really is gonna be more like 28 years, because they give you the, or 27 years, because they give you your project development time as well, and then they start from that point after.
Right.
So, what USDA needs as part of, you know, finalizing everything and moving ahead is for the Select Board to approve this resolution for the loan.
And just to be clear now, as to what, and we all understand, the USDA loan will come into play after the construction is completed, so we will pay the construction through a separate instrument called, I'll call it, I'll call it a construction loan.
Construction loan, we just call it a bond anticipation note.
Right.
And so currently, we have gone out to RFP with every financial institution that has a branch in Camden, plus a few others who we've done business with in the past, to look for, you know, that bridging financing.
Bridging loan?
Yep.
Okay, so this really will kick in in about...
Three years.
Three or four years.
Yep.
One thing to say about it, anytime somebody gives me $1,400,000, I think we should mention it a lot. Congratulations, that's a huge grant, that's a huge...
Dave Bolstrich deserves all the credit, he did a lot of hard work to...
She deserves the credit, not me.
To both of you, you know, there has been, in the last few years, there's been a tremendous amount of grant writing and grants coming into this town, and it's much appreciated, I think, by everybody in town about, you know, how forward-thinking people are about looking for, to save money for the town, and yet accomplish great things, so thank you.
I totally agree. And so, we need a motion to approve the $12.5 million USDA loan, so I can sign it.
As you just dictated, I will make that motion.
Second.
All's in favor, four, zero, thanks so much, that was an easy win. That's the, we haven't spent it yet, you know, so we're not worried about... So the second item, which is, under wastewater commissioners, is the consideration to authorize I, authorize, I'm okay, authorize the Superintendent of Wastewater and Town Attorney to prosecute four violators of the town of Camden sewer use ordinance who have basically refused to allow their properties to be inspected for any possible intrusion into the system.
Yes, correct.
So...
Can we get a quick update on how many, how many new appointments were made after that last...
Last meeting.
What are we down to?
I wasn't here today, so this is approximate. We had another 14, there was a list of 36...
Yep.
That hadn't let us in, and we had 14 that made appointments.
Great.
So now we're down to 22 that have not made, made appointments.
Okay, none of those done?
This book was so effective.
Thank you, Allison.
Yes.
Yes, I took a mild amount of abuse for that, but most comments were appreciative of the list being published, but a few people hate me forever.
They don't save the lot.
Lot of people, a lot of money, and that's a good thing.
No.
You're probably better off. Again, for some history for people who may not have followed this for the last year...
I'd say two.
I'd say a year and a half, two years, it's been, when we started the I&amp;I program was in 2017.
2015, the summer 2015.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's been...
Four years.
I mean, I had my basement inspected like years ago, and some people are like, I didn't, you know, I...
Let me finish. The, the, no offense, the, I'm just kidding, the, the, the years we've spent have been a tremendous amount of patience of going through the process of trying to identify everybody to open the doors for this inspection. There've been multiple notices of violation that have been sent to people, including registered mail, and they're just...
Countless news articles.
Yeah, countless, okay, countless news articles, and advertising in the newspaper at least twice that I remember. So we've really been, in my, my opinion, almost, honest, too patient, because this is serious violation, because there's, we're wrestling with, continue to wrestle with understanding and working on it right now to understand why our harbor may or may not be as polluted as some may think it is, and...
Well, and also, I'd say the cumulative impact of all of this is that we're, we're, you know, going to the DEP with our own...
Yes.
Violation for...
Yes, yes.
So, I mean...
Yeah, it's, I just wanted to score that, because it's truly important, it's, it's on, we're not being punitive here, in fact, we're, I think we're a little bit late in getting to this point. Mark?
I just wanted to clarify what Audra said, if we don't do this, we will be in violation of state law.
We already are.
Already are.
Yes.
And, and we will be fined.
Well, we're already...
We've already been fined, like, just...
We're about to be fined, that's right.
You know, so, we need, we need, we're, we're not doing this just because we want to clean up the water, this is the law, and it's real important that we get that. And I also think, there was a meeting with, Bob had a meeting with Abby, who's been doing checking waters and stuff, and I believe that the water is getting better, this has made a difference.
Well, you can't make that, I'd love to make that correlation, but the test, we are involved in a more extensive testing of the harbor, and that results have been billy-published and showing good results. We really have two reports, one in 2011, one 2014, I think, that were done by various entities that said the harbor had issues, didn't identify, couldn't identify what those issues were, whether it be a combination of boat waste, intrusion from the sewer treatment, or simply runoff from rainstorms over the land into the harbor, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah, I'd like to say that, Mark, I'm just not quite there yet, but I think back to this issue of the four people, we kind of left a delegation to you, Audra, to select these four, they may not be the only four, we're still trying to contact a few others on the list, they've been a little difficult to contact, a lot of times people are not living here, and they, or may have a property management service, we understand the complications, but this, we've got to move forward with this, and...
So would you like me to read the list?
Sure.
All right, so I'll read the, the name of the owner of record and then the address. So the first, One Union Street LLC, and that's for One Union Street, Monique Kendra Bergman, 12 Knowlton Street, Joseph Keeler and Michelle Hall, 33 Union Street, Richard Vixx and Maria and Maria Donna, One Fifty-Seven Chestnut Street.
Just to be clear, because I'm not sure it was said, the idea is that we litigate this group, and then if there are still people left to, who have not satisfied the enforcement, then we'll move on to another group after this.
That's correct.
This is, this is the first group of.
That's correct.
Right, and we're only focusing on those who did not allow us to inspect their properties at this stage.
And hopefully, this will draw attention to everybody else who will rectify the situation before we get there, but it doesn't mean there won't be a second round of people that we end up having to take to court.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
We shall see.
People that will refuse to fix the known issues.
Right.
Right, right. So, so anyhow, we, we.
Just to cross-reference with you and your list, does that sound right from, was there anybody that jumped out as a red flag, that, or that might have scheduled an inspection?
Have they complied since you came up with that list?
Yeah.
Uh, no, no, we, we still haven't been given permission to come into the, to check the plumbing.
Okay, great.
All right. So that's the list, and that is, yes, the first four. We're going to continue pressure to notify others that are on that list, it's down to, what, we said twenty-two now, that's pretty good. So this is.
Do we need a motion for this?
Yes, we do.
I make a motion that we authorize the enforcement for, against those four individuals, or four companies.
I will point out, we do have one other list, that is, a list of residents that have illegal connections, the sixty-two of them, and, you know, we're still waiting for them to make the repairs.
Understood.
So, you know, that's, that's out there now.
Glad you clarified that, because they, they have to be put on some kind of schedule also, to make sure performance is eventually going to occur.
Right, right. There are some, I know there are a few right now that, it's, it's hard to get contractors in town, they're so busy.
Absolutely.
And the trick is to make sure that, you know, they're, they're trying to, you know, get their issue resolved.
As far as you know, the sixty-two are not refusing to do it, just trying to get it done.
Right, correct. I will, I've got a lot of the phone numbers of these sixty-two, so I'll be calling, calling them and getting a status report from them.
Do I hear a second for the motion? Any discussion? Alls in favor, four zero to the motion. We can convene as wastewater commissioners, and reconvene as Select Board.
As you said, I make that motion.
Second.
Alls in favor, four zero.
If you're standing, no reason for me to review it.
Also.
Thank you, Dave, thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you very much.
Should say congratulations to Dave Bolstrich, because he's had a second grandchild.
Second grandchild. Congratulations, grandpa. A few more gray hairs.
There aren't any left, nothing left.
I know the feeling. Thanks, Dave. We, we have a couple of liquor licenses on a, to hear in public hearings. I'm going to read or discuss the, the procedure for public hearings. The board will hear from the applicant, if here. If not, we will revert to any comments in the public that would make any comments about the licenses. Please direct all comments through myself, be courteous, brief, and after all the public has spoken, we will revert to the Select Board for decision on the matter. And the first one is the application of Molly O'Rourke doing business as Betty Forever at Forty-Six Elm Street for a new Class One restaurant liquor license. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak for, against, or just to this license? Not seeing any hands, I'll revert to the Select Board for decision.
Would you like a motion?
I would.
I make a motion that we approve the application of Molly O'Rourke, DBA Betty Forever at Forty-Six Elm Street for a new Class One restaurant liquor license.
Second.
Alls in favor, four zero. The second is for the application of Stuart Smith, doing business as Grand Harbor Inn at Fourteen Bayview Street for renewal of a Class Three hotel liquor license. Is there anything the public would like to speak for, against, or just speak to of the issue? Not seeing any hands, I'll revert to the Select Board again.
I make a motion that we approve the application of Stuart Smith, DBA Grand Harbor Inn at Fourteen Bayview Street for renewal Class Three hotel liquor license.
Second.
Alls in favor, four zero. Great. With that, we'll close the public hearing, and revert back to our agenda, which would be next, the approval for Round the Mountain Trailhead. It sounds like a song.
You look like you've been hiking.
So, you know, we do have an assembly ordinance, four hundred people or more.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, a little shy about.
I just.
Yes.
Three hundred and ninety-eight short.
Two, sorry.
Do your math. Round the mountain.
Is he going to show up on the screen, or they?
I'm working on it.
Okay, thank you.
It went, I didn't realize it went so much to sleep. Oh, you have your.
My computer, is that right?
Oh.
Is that good? I have a disk, I have one of these too, so that's easier.
No, that's fine, I just have it kind of hijacked with, you're going to need to unplug the Apple TV, and here.
I can give you one of these.
Oh, that's good.
Okay. Ready for me to start?
Yes, sir, please.
Thank you for having me. I'm Ian Stewart, I'm the Executive Director for Coastal Mountains Land Trust, and I'm here tonight to do two things. One is just to give an update on the status of the Round the Mountain collaboration, which the town of Camden's been a big part of, and then specifically to talk about some joint work at the Snow Bowl for one of the three trailheads for the Round the Mountain Trail that we're hoping to work on in the near future. But I, I didn't go through the minutes to find out the last time I was here to give an overview, but probably been a year and a half at least, when I came in and gave a summary of where we were, and introduced the topic of building a trailhead at the, at the Snow Bowl for the Round the Mountain Trail. But just as a quick overview, this is a picture from the backside of Grassy Pond, which shows most of the project area, which is now a fifteen-hundred acre conservation easement project with the main water company, excuse me, it's about twelve hundred and fifty acres of the main water company, and then we've acquired some additional land to protect all of the water source for six communities, including Camden and Rockland, Rockport, Thomaston, Owls Head, and part of Warren. And these easements are also in place to allow the land trust to build trail systems, particularly this Round the Mountain Trail, which is going to go nine miles around Ragged Mountain and, and come to the Snow Bowl. And we, the town of Camden was very significant in this project, and it voted, the Select Board voted to donate sixty-three acres to the project now, three, four years ago, four, yep. And since then, we've continued to work forward. The, the next deadline for us is finishing the easement on the Grassy Pond project, which is scheduled to happen, well, scheduled to happen a little while ago, and now it's scheduled to happen in a few weeks. We're getting a five hundred thousand dollar grant from the Land for Means Future program to make that happen, which is really pivotal. So we're waiting on that process, which got waylaid a bit by the last gubernatorial regime. But we're really excited. The other thing that's happening with the Round the Mountain Trail is we're two miles into building it. So if you go over to Hope Street, off of Route Seventeen, there's a new trailhead, there's a handicapped accessible trail to the Thorndike Bridge site, which isn't built yet, but there's a quarter-mile handicap trail that's been already installed. We're building a bridge in this fall, and then beyond that, the, the trail contractor, which is named OBP Trail Works, which is Off the Beaten Path Trail Works, they've, they've actually worked around the world doing backcountry trails. He was in Patagonia all winter, building trails for new national parks down there. He's, he and his crew of four people are building the trail, and they've, they've completed about a mile and a half trail on this side of Ragged Mountain, but are heading to the Snow Bowl, which is why I'm here, because we want to prepare some of the stuff at the Snow Bowl, so when they get there, it all ties in nicely. Here's a map of the trail route, so if you look at, I don't know if my cursor's going to show up, but here, so this section here is the, the initial spur from the Hope Street side, and this has been built to the, to the Thorndike Brook Dam. And then they've also started in from the, what was previously the Hart property, they're working all along through here right now, towards Mirror Lake with the trail. We started on one of the, there's a steep section coming off of this section of the mountain, they started there, and, and they're now working in this direction. And we'll be working up the divide between Spring Mountain and Ragged Mountain in the coming weeks. And then, a little later in the fall, we'll be going in Rollins Road, bringing some fill into, there's actually a trail already built through this section, but they're going to improve it so that it has a better grade and has a better substrate and whatnot. So by, by November, we anticipate having five and a half miles built from Hope Street here, one, one of the main parking lots, through to the Snow Bowl. And then in years, years, year or two to come, would be to build around the north end of the mountain.
That's right.
Yep. And this is six feet wide, for the most part, the northern part will be eight feet wide, because if you hike the mountain in the winter, and even in the spring, that's where all the snow is. So we're trying to make it wide enough to actually groom nicely for Nordic skiing. But the southern side, we heard that smaller is better, especially when you're trying to build a trail for mountain bikes and hiking, and, and there's not a lot of snow on the south side.
Looks like you've done a great job of following Torbos.
Yeah, yep. And we, we laid it out as a staff, and then the contractor we selected came out and walked the entire thing and made a lot of microcorrections, and it's, it's very, and it's a unique trail, because it's wide enough to be comfortable and accessible, but not, it's not a road by any stretch, but it's also not a, a single track.
Just clarify, all the property's been.
Protected.
Protected, and you have all the property you need?
For this phase, around the northern end, we have, I'll say quietly, one more project to finish to get around the northern end. But I have made contact with said person, so we're working on.
Did you say you're bringing in fill?
So we are, so the big unknown of the whole project is how much fill we need, because, and I'm talking now on the south side of the mountain, it's mostly for low points and areas that have naturally kind of organic soils, where, especially for mountain bikes, we're, we're bringing in three different kinds of fill. There's some big cobble, the really fill in lower sections, and then capping it with something that's much like what you find on the Acadia Trails. We're not going to do that on the entire trail, because that would be, you'd need that one point four million dollar grant to make that happen.
I mean gravel more than fill.
Yeah, I do mean gravel, fair enough. So what I mean fill, yeah, we're bringing in both coarse stone, and then we're bringing in three-quarter inch mineless gravel.
Oh.
Yeah. And we're, but we're, we've found that we've needed a whole lot less than we expected, because the native till soils have actually been quite good on most of the ground so far. So, which is great.
What kind of.
Well, history, the reason we're, we're specifically interested in talking about improvements to the Cooler Trail, is that when it was built, it was built at a standard that makes it so an expert can get up, but everybody else is pretty scared away by both skiing, even mountain biking, I think it's quite steep, and hiking. So what we're proposing in this map summarizes a little bit as to, the Cooler is two loops right now, is connecting them such that it's one long traverse across, so that there's a much more gradual hike up, so that this, so you can actually connect all the way through. And then once you get up to, if you know the Snow Bowl, there's a bench at maybe a quarter mile up the hill. And once you make that bench, you've got all kinds of opportunities to do things at a beginning, intermediate level.
Right.
So we wanted to try to connect the Cooler Loop together, and widen some of the turns at the base, so that it becomes a much more accessible trail.
Right.
This is where, this is where we will be doing our work, that's already under, if you've been up to the Snow Bowl, this is where you leave the Snow Bowl property and can head on to the Ragged Mountain Preserve. We'll be widening this to eight feet in coming to this point. So it's from this point down the hill that we're, that I'm talking about for permission and approval tonight.
Is eight feet pretty consistent through most of the trail system, around what you guys are doing for width?
Yes, we're actually looking for a tread for, well, this section's eight feet, because this is also good Nordic skiing, it's on the north side. Once you get to the south, we're going down to six feet. The Cooler Loop, which is there, is probably sixteen to eighteen feet. It was built with the idea of dual skating track and, well, various uses, yeah, having room for two different uses, depending on what you're doing, so it's much water.
Thanks.
Yeah. So here's a map of what we're proposing, I'll, you know, just pause a second, turn to talk about process a little bit. The Snow Bowl staff has been great to work with, we've talked about this for several years now, in terms of what, what kind of outcome we wanted to have here. Jeremy's been great to help get DEP involved, because as we talked through what the, what the decisions here were, we kept realizing that, in fact, getting the DEP to come on site and look at exactly what we're proposing in specific locations, and get their, their feedback. Gartley Dorsky has also, as you'll see from some of these other drawings, has done a lot of mapping from existing base maps to, to look out. So they've also been part of this circle of people talking about it. But in essence, what we're, we're doing is, starting from, from the side parking area, which is kind of on the way to Tobogganville, Tobogganville, previously, we talked about actually a trailhead here, which was going to be an entrance garden, acknowledging donors and all sorts of things, which, that was my last presentation. We've now moved that all to the other side of the mountain, just for simplicity. We have complete control of the land, we can do that there. All we're looking for here is actually making trail improvements, and having some basic stones and a kiosk at the trailhead, so people know where the start is. But the, the key here is, summarized in several sections, is widening the trail from the, to, to eight feet for the first, I forget, nine hundred and ten feet, I think it is, so going up through and behind the, the, the beginning ski slope. There is one bridge that's there now, is a mountain bike bridge that will be added, and, excuse me, there's two small bridges, there's one, one at this section, and then one again, as you, as you cross that same, so it's, it's a small stream up here. So there's two streams, and, this is getting specifically, so in terms of the DEP's feedback, everything we're doing here was compliant with, with their needs, with, not that it isn't compliant, but we, the only thing we need a permit by rule for are two small stream crossings, and I think that's it.
I think that's it. It sounded like you actually needed maybe just one, based on the last.
The last feedback we get, sure.
We went up there, and we looked at this first one where he was talking about, and DEP said, oh yeah, that's a stream, and then a wetland, and then we went and walked the rest of the trail, and we came back down, and they said that it's actually not a stream and not a wetland, is what I heard recently. So, at least one, maybe two permit by rules for stream crossings.
Just, just to be clear, in your, in your drawing here, what I'm seeing is two things going on from the ledger. One, your beginning woods, three hundred and fifty feet, is, that's effectively replacing the segmented dotted line that is running over, is that correct, the white dotted line?
Well, there is existing mountain bike trail that is going up that, this section right through here.
Yeah.
And right now, there's a, the problem with the Cooler Trail is when you get there at the beginning, it's immediately straight uphill for about two hundred yards, such that any beginner user says, I don't want to do this.
Where the parking sign is, is there actually going to be a trail there also?
The only need for existing trail there is for the CMP truck to still be able to get up the hill to a pole, besides that.
What Bob's asking, is the dotted trail going to be discontinued and be replaced with the other one?
I would have to let Beth know that, or just.
And I think in some areas, it will.
We'll let it grow up, but especially that first long section, that's where the climb is really, really steep.
Is this, is this dotted line piece actually going to be there?
It's going to be there, but we're going to let it grow up, it'll probably leave some single track.
So the, the main, the major trail will be this?
Yes, the red will be, become the primary, yeah.
This is kind of obvious. Is this an additional trail?
So, so there is a trail there, but it goes across a wetland.
Here?
Yep. So the DEP said you'd be better off to move this uphill fifty yards.
So those, basically replacing some sections?
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
And then we're letting that piece go away.
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to grow up.
Yeah.
Is it going to be, like, intentional planting, or?
Natural growth.
I'm not sure, I don't think, I mean, walking through that area, I'm not sure we need to intentionally plant anything in some of these areas.
I know as you go up the old ski slope, Beth, you'd have to tell me what the name of it is.
The old, the old bunny.
Coaster, or what was it?
The old bunny slope.
The old bunny slope, you go there now, and the trees are ten feet high, and it's only been five years or something, so I, in general.
Right, but even just like the types of trees, I keep reading all these things about forest management, and you guys probably know lots about.
Sure.
What, there are better trees for, like, certain animals that need more of certain kinds of trees?
Isn't this just undergrowth? What you're getting is an early successional.
I mean, I would watch out for not letting it become an invasive batch, which would then impact other things, but I would let native recruitment.
Right.
Thing, generally.
Need a free.
Yeah, it's a great project for people who want to be involved in something, if people want to plant stuff, it'd be a great.
But most of the regrowth is going to be by natural regrowth, which is going to be undergrowth to start with.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
You ready for a motion?
I am.
I make a motion that we approve the changes for the Round the Mountain Trailhead.
Great. And specifically, there's two elements. One is that we go, we jointly submit an application for a permit by rule, and the second one is laying out, for us, clearly how we want to work in terms of doing an MOU with the Snow Bowl. Our proposal is that we do an agreement with the Snow Bowl with Beth, that we will be managing the contractor to do this work, and I think, but this would all be spelled out in MOU, which I'm happy to bring back in its final form, either to Beth, or if the Select Board needs to see that.
Yeah, we just have to make sure, because this all sounds so, I mean, it's not like, I'm not saying it's like the Snow Bowl redevelopment, but it, it could.
Could be enough.
It, it has, it has a lot of those, the same elements.
Yep.
And so, I believe that, you know, having Jeremy here now and involved eliminates some of that risk, and not that you guys are, and just the fact that you guys care about things is also a big help, but I don't think that we should just go with the path of least, because no matter what, there are going to be, even when you do the best things in the world, there are going to be little things that happen, there are going to be people that say, why was there all this? There is going to be a period of time where it looks like a lot of disturbance. So I think as, we should go through the path of, it should come, I think the planning board should just, not, not that we're saying they need to approve it, because I don't think they do, but I think, you know, Jeff, for instance, you know, Jeff Centers has done all this stuff, looking at the issues that we have on the mountain, and where erosion figure points are, and it would make me feel better if it wasn't coming down to just me saying, oh, I, you know, I think it's okay. I, I think we should go through more of a, you know.
Hey.
I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, I'm not sure it's needed in this. I mean, Gartley and Dorsky, as part of their project right now, in the Round the Mountain Trail already, they already have, they're doing third-party inspections on the site, erosion control and sedimentation control inspections. How often is that?
Every week, every week.
Every week, so they got a staff person out there, inspecting the whole site, every week, I will say. But we're, they're going to continue that here, I'll be there.
Now, is there something that says that they're required to do that?
Well, that gets back to the.
No, it's just good common sense, given the history.
See, to Allison's point, I think that's what, that's what the memorandum of understanding should clarify.
That should be with the Select Board, with, I don't, it doesn't, it didn't sound like.
I, I think in the, in the MOU, a lot of what you're getting at right now, we can build into that.
I agree.
Like that was going to come to us.
No, no, that'll.
My suggestion next tonight is that we put an MOU to get, that we get approval to move forward in MOU.
Absolutely.
Whether you need to vote on it again, or at least have, have input to it before it's finally signed.
Approval.
Vote on it.
And again, and I'll work with Ian on making sure we have what we need in there.
This is ongoing work, how long will it take to develop this MOU? This is ongoing work. How long will it take to develop this MOU?
Uh, it needs to happen fairly quickly, I think.
I think in the next two weeks, yeah.
That's my point.
We'd love to be at the next meeting if you have a meeting in two weeks.
Um, if you get it done that quickly, we'll get it on.
Yeah. Do we actually have anything we need to approve tonight before?
I think. Want to step in the, the, the permit by rule application, which is.
Right, and I asked DEP on that and they didn't care if the town, it was co-applicants or the land trust did it with having an MOU with us that they were doing this on, on our property. That was fine for DEP.
Yeah.
So however you want to handle it, I think co-applicants.
The MOU has to be. That has to be. Otherwise, there's too much verbal going back and forth and trouble starts. No offense to anybody, of course.
Sure, sure. No, no, that's what we want too. We want it all.
But I think that's the absolutest necessity. The faster the better. Now, do we need, do you need a motion to approve these rerouting of the trails tonight?
I don't think we can really.
I don't see how you can.
Give that.
I mean, my, my request was to move forward with an MOU and the permitting. So if you guys are willing to do that.
That's fine. That's all we need.
We're not going to do any work until the MOU is done.
That's, that's perfect. That's perfect.
And I'll make sure the MOU has stuff that you want in it.
All right.
I know what you're looking for.
So fundamentally, a motion is just the, is just the approval to move forward with the MOU, with the process?
With the understanding that in two or four weeks, we'll vote on an MOU.
To allow them to, to apply for permits?
Yep, yep.
Great.
I'll change the motion to, uh, to authorize Coastal Mountains Land Trust to, to work on the MOU, bring it back to us in a couple of weeks. And in the meantime, have our permission to apply for permits.
Great.
As co-applicants with the town.
As applicants with the town.
Second.
All's in favor? Four zero. Thanks, Ian.
One of the reasons why I brought DEP up there?
No, I get it. I get it. I get it. I get it. But we, but we literally have to paper this trail.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, DEP doesn't, they say yes to all kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
And then things go wrong.
Right.
And then it's still our responsibility or who's ever.
Somebody's.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ian. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Great.
Jeremy? Are they in our packet?
Yes.
Yes, let me just, uh.
Sorry.
What are you looking for?
I thought it'd be good to pop up the, the crosswalk that we're talking about at Wright Aid. That's what we're approving tonight. Location of the, um, of the, um, which drawing it is.
Sidewalk improvements?
Yes. It's MDOT's, it's drainage really. It's more than sidewalk.
Are we going to do that before the marijuana cultivation?
I was excited about the, he likes his drawings.
I jumped ahead. No, we want to do it in order. Yeah, that's going to be a quickie. Sorry about that. I get so excited.
We're just scheduling it, right?
So the item is the scheduling of public hearing for the marijuana cult, cultivation licensee, licensing. Please let us know what we're talking about here, Jeremy.
Sure. So if you recall, um, the ordinance that, um, town voters passed at, in the June ballot was to allow marijuana cultivation facilities in town. Um, and I think the vote was pretty good in favor of that. Piece of that ordinance requires a cultivation facility to get a marijuana cultivation facility license. Which at the time was not developed. I didn't work on it until, I wanted to make sure that it got approved. It did get approved, um, by voters. So now what I'm working on and what I have a draft, which is like ninety percent done, is a licensing ordinance to license marijuana facilities. And what I did in this case.
Marijuana cultivation.
Well, yes, and let me just clarify. Let me just clarify because what I don't want to do is, at some point, likely in June, I'm going to, um, the cannabis or the marijuana working group is going, I'm going to convene them in short order to start looking at retail, to start looking at testing facilities and products manufacturing facilities. And then to bring those to voters in June potentially. What I don't want to have to do is come back after that to do another business licensing ordinance for retail or testing or cultivation. So what I did was I lumped them all into this business licensing ordinance, but it is very clear if you read it that it only applies to those things that are legally permitted by the zoning ordinance. So right now, so there'll be, eventually there'll be maybe multiple different marijuana licensing, licenses. This one specifically that someone would be able to get after November's vote would only be allowed to get a marijuana cultivation facility license. So everyone would go through the same process, um, for the most part. Fees would likely be different, um, but outside of that, it would be the same. So that's why I did it that way. And I think we'll need to be very clear when we get to voters, um, when we put this on the ballot so that people understand what that is. That we are not approving, you know, we don't allow those all right now anyway. So this is just making the, um, laying it out if we do allow them in the future.
Oh, no problem.
So basically.
Well, you know, I mean, it's about messaging and I think, I think we can lay it out pretty clear in a, in a little blurb memo that we did. Like, I think, I thought what we did last time for the election ballot clarified to the voters.
Clarify to the voters in November to make sure they know what the voting on retail or other aspects of it, I agree.
Exactly right.
But this, this public hearing will be for this ordinance only, and are we, we're talking about the twentieth or the third?
September third is my hope. Um, and we have to notice that and have it available seven days before.
That's what I was asking.
Um, and then if need be, if something comes up on the third, Janice did say I can go out to like the next meeting in September.
Seventeenth?
Yes, at the very latest.
Yeah, you're going to have to have final wording by then.
I know. We're going to have final wording by September third.
All right.
That's my hope.
Good question.
By September third?
The September, we're saying the public.
Hearing.
Public.
Hearing on September.
Final wording by?
September seventeenth, I thought.
By? I, I thought you said you want to have a public hearing on September third.
On September third.
So you have to have the final wording.
Two weeks later.
Before.
Yeah, seven days before.
The wording of the, of the, of this ordinance, the wording of the ordinance will be issued seven days before September third.
Correct.
To the public for review.
Yeah, seven days before the public hearing.
I think we're confusing the wording for the warrant.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. Okay.
No, it's okay. So the warrant, the wording for the warrant does have to be done by the middle of September, I thought.
Yes.
Okay.
How did you go through the process of developing the draft?
Well, um, I've been working on marijuana stuff in Maine for a number of years. And so I've kind of followed this and I've been in the legislature, watching the legislature for years on this. I've seen what other towns have done, Farmington, Brunswick, Auburn. I looked at South Portland. South Portland's was pretty, um, wide open, it seemed to me. And so I just went, I kind of looked at what Brunswick did, what, again, Auburn, Farmington, they're all pretty much the same, honestly. And what it is, what it did was, you know, the preamble, I can maybe go through it really quickly. The preamble says why, why we're doing this. The authority, um, there's state statute on the adult use piece that I included in here and then the home rule authority, which allows us to do this. So that's what that is. The definitions are pretty, pretty straightforward. The license required, um, that's section four indicates a license required. It's all very easy to follow. And I did follow our existing business licensing ordinances that we have, the sort of vigorous license. So it's, if someone looks at the code or the ordinances that we have, if it's for the most part laid out the same way as our other ordinances.
Right.
And then there's, it indicates, a lot of towns give some of this authority to the town clerk to issue licenses and not necessarily go through a select board. I felt you guys as the, as the local, like local licensing authority was the most appropriate.
Literally licenses, right? Are we trying to keep it pretty close to the process or?
And like even the dates and timing in the review and application process was taken right from, right from that. What else?
Why all the stuff about, it feels like some of the requirements about video surveillance and all of that stuff would be better with the, you know, the state's going to have all kinds of requirements or they do have all kinds of requirements.
These are kind of modeled on the states as well. So I mean, either I compare it all the way back to nothing and just say, you've got to get your state license and approval. That said, what I'm hearing from Augusta, what Augusta may do is they're, they may just loosen this up completely and say, it's the town's job to deal with that.
Yeah, I just think some of it's a little much to the twenty-four hour surveillance and the, I'd like to be able to le, make reasonable changes to these types of things without having to change an ordinance. The other thing is the fees. I think I'd rather just give the select board the authority to set the fees rather than five hundred to a thousand, I mean, a thousand dollars to get a license. What else do we, there's nothing else that we would even consider such a high fee for.
If we come anywhere lower than that, we will be by far the lowest in the entire state for fees.
I think the select board should set the fees like we do for.
If you want me to include that, I mean.
Can I ask a question? How did you combine the numbers and the, the rules for all of the things that Allison just mentioned?
I looked at what the state law was trying to convey, even though the state is now coming up with rules. And what I've heard is that those rules may get, become pretty lax because the state is only allowing these in municipalities that are locally allowing them. And that the state is, my understanding, the state's saying it's really going to be a local issue and enforcement on this stuff.
So if right now the state is promulgating certain physical facility issues and they haven't thrown it down to us yet, it's kind of a, use Taylor's term, a slippery slope to start putting in physical requirements at this point until the state decides what it's doing or not doing.
Well, there are some that are in there and I don't think some will change. I mean, I can try to go through and figure out which ones are going to not change. This seemed, again, I looked at just about every town in the entire state that is allowing these and licensing them. This is for the most part what every town has done.
How has?
It is a cash business, remember.
One of the other, um, circumstances we have, there are a number of states that have done this ahead of us. How does what Maine is doing fit with what the experience of other states have had and how have they, um, come up with reasonable?
That's a good question, Mark. Um, I was hopeful that we would be able to learn from a lot of that. It doesn't appear that way.
I think Augusta, Augusta went from scratch.
I mean, they hired firms from a way that helped other states do it, but for the most part, it appears they're trying to do it from scratch.
I mean, it seems like with a lot of the other permits, um, licenses that the select board approves, we're able to add in certain things based on, you know, making, we were able to make these licenses contingent on certain things. We don't often use that ability, but some select board previously appears to have instituted the no drums policy at Cuzzy's. And that held, um, I just would prefer not to put more in the ordinance than needs to be in the ordinance. I would, I would trust even a future select, and now it's easy to say, oh, well, let's let the select board decide and that seems good now. But I would trust even a future select board to, I'd rather have that human ability to say, you know what? Your business, like, okay, we're going to give you that license again this year, but this time I think we're going to need to require twenty-four hour surveillance. If, if the state already has a law.
I think the twenty-four hour surveillance is going to stay in there, but.
I mean, then great. If the state decides that, then great.
I will say, I have pulled a bunch of the out that I thought was really redundant from what the state had, but I can go through and pull out things. I think for me, it's also about getting people in the town to approve it. And if we're not taking surveillance or security and those kinds of things seriously in the ordinance and just saying we're relying on state rules that number one are hard for people to find and people don't understand, then are we becoming lax and are we just lax on security over and surveillance? Or I'm, I'm just throwing that out there.
Does it say we have to have a public hearing?
There is a hearing.
So we have a public, that's the process that seems to work well here where we have the public hearing about what the business wants to do and people come and express their concerns and we, there's also going to be that whole ZBA thing. I mean, it's, there's, there's a lot of opportunity to add conditions. So I don't.
Why don't we have Jeremy take another whack?
Sure. And I can come back, I can come back in two weeks with, with some changes, potential changes.
First and foremost, we need to set the public hearing.
That's, that's true, but remember, we got to have that final language done.
Seven days before.
Seven days so that.
We discussed it again.
Even more because of the newspaper cycle, but.
Exactly. So if we discussed it on the twentieth, we could, we would have time for the public hearing on the, on the, on the third.
Yep.
Yep.
So I'll tweak it a little bit.
Yeah, Allison and I don't often disagree. I think, um, I'm a little, I think I lean the other way a little bit. And then in that, given that this is not just new to our town, but new to our state, I feel more comfortable having the ordinance a little beefier than normal. Just so things are set in stone. I mean, um, I guess I'm just a little bit worried if it's, if it's completely wide open that things could fluctuate from select board to select board. I just, I'm worried that that.
And expectations, expectations of a licensee will, could potentially change too.
Certainly. I mean.
From year to year.
And ordinance can always be changed. We all know that it's a longer process.
It's too long.
That anybody really wants, but if something really egregious came up in years that we felt like, or a future board or the public felt like needed to be changed, that could always happen. But I don't know, I guess, there's nothing specifically that, that, that I feel like.
X-ing out.
Yeah, I, I guess just philosophically, I'm a little more, I'm a little more, um, worried about having, having this one be stronger than, than most, considering the circumstances. That's all.
Mark?
I, I, I agree with Taylor and the reason why is, you know, I'm, I like the fact that what we're doing matches what other towns are doing. Because if for some reason we lessen the consideration and the other towns stay the way they are and state law lessens, then all of a sudden, right now, it's good for local people to get involved and, and do it then. But if all of a sudden we're the easiest place to do cultivation and all of a sudden we have people coming in, not from around Maine, but from out of state to say, hey, Camden's the place we need to cultivate, I'm a little worried about being overwhelmed if we have the easiest laws, if we don't match everybody else.
The easiest laws, I mean, South Portland is, it's just, I want to give discretion to the select board so that somebody also, so that somebody can't say, well, I've met all these requirements and so you have to approve my license. It should, these types of things in Camden are like liquor licenses. It's designed to be like, you have to run through this gauntlet and, and make everybody feel okay. Like the, the fees. We should be able to decide that for, for, based on the size of the operation, that, you know, when we, when we approve our fee schedule every year, we should be able to say that tier one is going to be this kind of a fee and tier, what are, you know, tier three is going to be this kind of a thing. It's not to make somebody like a little tiny operation in a, in a room, like somebody that's running a, a really small operation, come up with a thousand dollars to, or to have twenty-four hour video surveillance. There are going to be things that come up that don't necessarily, it'll be, what we'll be doing is bringing in, only allowing the really big sort of heavy hitters.
I'm pretty certain the twenty-four hour surveillance is going to be in there no matter what statewide.
So why do we need to worry, you know, but if.
Why include it? My, again, my thought was that it has to get, go to voters and voters need to be comfortable. And I think when we looked at crafting the cultivation piece, we looked at it broadly and looked at people's concerns and, and I think addressed it. And so that was my intent here was to just try to manage people's.
But it's not to relitigate everything. We went through this whole process where everybody was terrified it wasn't going to get approved. And, you know, I kept saying, I think it's actually not as contrary.
I mean, I hear what you're saying.
There's a lot of opportunity to, the ZBA could do any number of these things just to get the special exception. So the ZBA could say dark sky compliant, all of this stuff. And then they come to the select board and the select board could say it all again. So I just think we shouldn't.
I will, I will go over our ordinance again and see if there's things that are in state law that I'm certain will not change and see if I can pull them out.
That, that would be one of the.
And I may be able to phrase things a little better in terms of if, if for sure surveillance is in there, I can include some phrase in the section that you got, your state license.
Yep.
And then I can reference security and surveillance measures that are, and just try to do it that way.
Do that. And I think also, I think it's always wise to pull dollars out of an ordinance in case you want to change them because of the dynamic market.
That's fair. And I have a note to do that. So I will do that.
That's easy to pull out because we do approve all other rates and that's kind of a, because, you know, if you wanted to change from a thousand to ten thousand, being ridiculous, we'd have to go through an ordinance change.
Right. That's like why the select board salary is wrong in our town charter.
I think that makes good sense. The one, I did add something that the state is now in the process of adding, which is, which is NFPA chapter thirty-eight.
Yep.
Which is the standards for marijuana cultivation facilities and grows and products manufacturing. The state doesn't have that.
They don't?
No, currently.
It's a brand new standard.
It, it's a standard that's been around a little bit and the state is now going to be adopting it, state fire marshal. to be adopting it, State Fire Marshal's going to be adopting it this year. I just talked to him the other day.
You're talking about for marijuana facilities?
Chapter 38.
They haven't adopted it?
They have not. But they will be, this year. And I included it in here.
That was for what, for-
National Fire Protection.
Right.
For what kinds of facilities, for these?
These specifically for marijuana cultivation, products manufacturing. I mean, I will say, when I was in Bangor, we saw, we saw some, it's not just manufacturing that causes problems, it is grows that cause fires.
Lights.
Yep.
And so this, this is a standard for those grows, too.
Yep, yep.
And that applies, and within this, the code officer will do an inspection prior to the licensing like you do. Stick fire chief and the police to a background check.
Say what we can turn, does it, does it include language about, you know, the license can be-
Revoked.
Revoked, or just not renewed or denied for any reason.
I'm not there yet.
Like, it doesn't have to fall under one of these, I want to, I'd like it to say that, you know, the select board has discretion, or that, something that explains that it doesn't, it's not that we're just applying some standard where we can evaluate based on these requirements, and these are the only reasons we could deny the license.
Yep.
It should be like it is with liquor licenses, like, how much of a problem has this been around town, and, as much as I actually don't like that very much.
You've got to be careful with that, because this is, this is a business we're talking about here. And if they're going to be operating a business, and you don't have some basis from which to destroy a person's business, you're going to have to be careful. So I think that's, that's, that one I'd have a little heart for.
Well, that's what we've done in the, I mean, I think we have told people, and a lot of the conversations revolved around making the licensing process be like liquor licenses.
I, I'm going to try to include something about discretion to deny, renew, and revoke licenses. Issue.
Because we can't think of everything here. It scares me to think of, like, well, we haven't, okay, well, these are all the requirements, but sometimes it is just intangible.
Understandable, but it's also you got the person on the other side of the table who says, I'm doing a business investment here to do this, and somebody's going to have the select board tell me that I don't like the color of your lights in your front door, so you're out.
Well, we are going to say that.
After I've just built the facility a year later.
Right, and the ordinance, we've got that. So, I mean, I'm concerned about the same thing, putting it all in here and making, it's just like, all right.
There's a catch-22. There has, but there has to be some criterion that they know if they violate, they could be subject to suspension or removal of the license.
If it's in there, at least they know what to expect.
Well, you got to give some expectations.
You have to lay it out there, you can't-
I was making a joke about the lights in the front door, I'm not talking about the dark skies, yeah, that's the dark sky, I'm talking about, if, I don't, I don't like that the fact that your restroom is only, you know, one stall. We can reject it for just any reason we want, now that's, that's, I think that's capricious.
Can we, can we reject a liquor license for any reason we want?
I'm, I'm not sure you can do it for any reason you want.
There has to be a reason for it.
Has to be a reason.
It always just comes down to who's going to sue us, if somebody's going to sue us over this or not.
There you go, there you go, that's what it comes down to. But, so the process, we can set, still set the third for the public hearing.
Yep.
We can, if you want, bring a revision, it never hurts.
No, I'll come back, I will come back in two weeks.
You know, it never hurts to make the third more efficient.
Yeah, it will make the third more efficient.
Well, because our fuse is getting a little short.
It is.
So if we want to make a motion to set the third for the public hearing for this, this cultivation licensing-
Marijuana business licensing.
Marijuana business licensing, we should do that now.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Great.
Here, we don't really do that, like that, we normally do it, we look at the thing, and then we set the-
I know.
We've had this conversation so many times. We've done it a variety of different ways.
Oh, definitely. But the principle of it is that you're sending it, you're like approving a, I mean, whatever, I approve, I mean, I, it's fine.
See, I feel that way about special town meetings. Anyway.
Let me install this, what was this about?
No, no, don't, let's, let's-
It's the philosophical debate about the order of things and the way things should be, and the message you send to the public.
And I agree with that, and the only reason I'm kind of bending here is because we have a sure fuse.
Yeah.
So that the public can be, know it's coming up on September 3rd, and, I mean, we could cancel it and not do November, but at least we have September 3rd.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather get it in play, I mean-
Forget in two weeks when we-
I mean, the state's rules will be, should be ready to go in the fall. So if someone wants to come into town and make an investment and do this, this winter, they can do that.
Great. Thanks, Jeremy, thanks a lot.
Shortly thereafter.
Now, we will move on to the discussion of the-
Crosswalk.
Approval of the crosswalk on Elm Street for MDOT's Route 1. Allison, is there any possibility of pulling up drawing five?
Yes, I'm just scrolling, scrolling. This is a pretty specific request that MDOT had. So at the public hearing, there was a lot of feedback on the crosswalk, they were proposing to move it from its current location in front of the Rite Aid to Wood Street, because it's MDOT's crosswalk placement policy, that crosswalks should only be located at intersections. And so they received a lot of feedback from everybody that it was, at that public hearing, that Wood Street was not a good location for it, and everyone would, by and large, prefer that it stayed at its current location. And so they have agreed to that, that change from their design, and they just wanted to come back to the town and get formal approval for them to keep the crosswalk in its current location, which is different than the original design that they showed to the public, at the public hearing.
It used to be over here.
So we're approving for them to change that.
Exactly.
Well, well, no, I mean-
And their drawings and designs changed.
The designs changed from what they had proposed at the hearing to this drawing. That said, also, what we're agreeing to by doing this is we need to send them a letter in writing that we're okay with this, but what that means is there will be no parking spaces within 20 feet of that crosswalk.
On both sides of the street.
On both sides of the street. There is no ifs, ands, or buts, or can we, can we talk to them about it? We cannot.
We'll be eliminating parking spaces.
We will be eliminating, likely, I think it's just three. And that's funny, I, hard for me to scale this, Bob, but I think we're going to lose that one, and then that one there, for sure.
These two.
It's so funny that they're like, there are no ifs, ands, or buts about this, because that's the right way to do it, but obviously, they can compromise on that because they're not forcing us to do it in the rest of the places.
Well, I can read you the letter, email from Arrel. He says, they will put it in this location.
Right thing to do.
It is.
With, with management will okay them to do that, with the understanding that town knows that those spaces are going in.
Our current crosswalks, the way they configured with parking is very dangerous.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean-
Very dangerous.
Close calls all around.
Yeah.
Especially when people double park.
So, that's a nice compromise.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that's, that's the extent of the change they're asking us to approve tonight.
Yes, and I did talk, in case it comes up, there was some comment about street trees earlier, that BD Parker wrote a letter, and then I know at that meeting, there was some discussion about street trees. I did send a follow-up email asking about locations, so just to keep that on their, on their radar.
Yep.
Especially as you get towards the Village Green.
The landscape plans are the last things they do.
They are. We would be responsible, I think, to plant the trees, is what we said.
Well, no, there's a little bit of leeway there, we've talked about it, and-
All right, but right now, the issue is-
Just this location, maintaining it at the Rite Aid, and understanding that we won't have parking spaces within 20 feet of that crosswalk.
So on that drawing, some parking spaces are going to go.
I can't, it's hard for me to scale out this plan, Bob, the one I have.
That's a, that's a, parking space is, what, 15 feet?
No, about 18 feet.
18 feet?
Yeah, so-
Oh, actually, you know what, that's the only one that would, that would go.
Yeah.
Have it on the plan.
That's where my point-
Don't, I, I can't, I know, I understand, I question the same thing. I read the email, and I say, okay, I'm going to look at the plan, I look at the plan, and I see parking spaces there.
Well, codes and standards continuously change, and they go by a certain route, right, wrong, or indifferent.
Yeah, and the, and the guy drawing this is not Arrel or Doug, that is, the senior project people on this project that are working with management. So the traffic engineer that came here, I think he was listening to everyone's comments about parking, 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 and I think he just drew them in there, and he probably wasn't listening to Arrel, or in Arrel's other place with management, would be my guess.
That's the one version, this is like drawing D, and they have drawing E on a computer.
Or they're, or they're just looking at the crosswalks, and they weren't really looking at the parking.
Yeah, you might go as one, two, three.
Three only, because you got the drive to, into Rite Aid, right, adjacent to that crosswalk. So you're not going to, I don't fathom you're going to lose that one that's up the street from that, or down the street from that.
No, I don't, I don't, I'm not.
A little bike rack or something.
A 20-foot piece.
Aren't there many places to leave a bike in Camden? And you can see people over top of, are there-
I'm not sure how that-
I'm not sure they're going to allow, they won't allow those in that 20-foot space, but I think we can maybe try to find some location for a bike rack down along the Village Green, maybe?
I'm not sure.
Sidewalk opens quite up.
Jeremy?
I feel like this is a good project for-
Patrick Adams?
No. We'll talk, we can talk about it later.
The standard usually says no, no obstruction 20 feet. No obstruction.
Obstruction.
Anyway, whatever it says, it says. So we have a motion to-
Make a motion that we-
Just, okay, make it, and then we can discuss.
So I'll draw your letter, yep.
Send a letter to DOT, authorizing them to keep the crosswalk we currently have.
As shown in the drawing.
As shown in the drawing.
Are you doing?
Discussion.
All right. Was that like a, an intentional thing, to be like, as shown in the drawing, were you doing that?
Well, all they care about is one piece of paper. They don't care what we actually have, that's, that's what we know, what to be, happens to coincide here. But we are approving the location of the crosswalk as depicted on drawing five, right here. That's what we're approving.
And we're also certifying that we know that the, about the parking spot being removed.
Parking spaces need to go away.
That part, I can't tie, I'd be surprised, but no, it shows parking spaces in the drawing. We're not voting on the parking spaces in the drawing, we're only voting on the location of the crosswalk.
What you need to, we need, this letter to DOT needs to say that we're okay with those, that location, we like the location, thank you for doing that, and we understand that there will be no parking spaces within 20 feet of the crosswalk.
Or you can say, we assume there's no change to parking spaces.
Or they're going to say, we're going to put it at Wood Street.
That's, that's-
Yeah, Jeremy was, yeah.
That's what's going to happen.
That will happen.
Don't we agree that the parking space thing is good, because people get hit?
It's definitely a tricky spot when you're driving, especially driving sideways.
I don't want to push back on that.
There's no question, there's no question it's safer.
Yeah, I have no problem.
I mean, what I heard from the discussion was that you were okay with it, and then the motion didn't include it, but I understand, based on the discussion, that you want to include it.
So just clarifying-
Bump out right there with the, to take away where the parking spot is going away, make it a little bit more of a-
Could.
A bump out?
A bump.
I mean, I hear you.
One of the discussions in the meeting with DOT is that if they move the crosswalk further up, people won't use it as much, and they will do more jaywalking.
That's, that's what people said.
Yeah, that's why they're doing it.
Reason, so if we're going to have people crossing there, the safety is important. It'll improve the safety, and it'll keep down, you know, people cutting up in front of cars trying to get in.
I hear that, but I see people walking three feet, jaywalking, they already do it anyway. I think the issue is just, I think it's just located better, and that's, that's what we're agreeing to.
Hold on, you like, where, you want, where do you want the crosswalk?
I don't, I don't think it makes a heck of a difference, I think in terms of people jaywalking, they jaywalk anyway. The people down, more downtown, they can be 10 feet from a crosswalk, and they'll still jaywalk, because it's easier.
Very little, I mean-
I almost hit two people this year, because I came up between, behind, between a truck and a car, and I saw them at the last minute, I wasn't close to hitting them, honestly, but it was, the truck was parked on one side of the, of the crosswalk, and they came out on the other side, and just, you know, they think, they think, they think this is a beach community, where you can walk barefoot and cross anywhere, anytime, and not get it, it's Route 1, 12,200 cars a day, 10% of which are trucks.
Did you count them?
No, that's what's on the drawing.
Okay.
That's what's on this drawing. And that's the truth, and it's, it's a dangerous road, you know, and people just don't get that sometimes. But what we, clear, what we are proving is, I agree with putting it here, I think we should put it here. If we lose three parking spaces, that's the way it goes. I prefer not to, but-
And then I just want to be certain that we're not signing off on the entire drawing, because there's still a number of opportunities for-
The only, only thing that they needed from us was, in order to get to management, so that they can move forward on actually designing that, is a letter from the select board, the town, saying that we're okay with the new, the location and its current location, as long as there's no parking within 20 feet. That's all this was about.
The bump out thing, is there anything wrong with a bump out there?
I will, I will include that in the letter.
Looking at Jeff to tell me what's, what's right or wrong, or, do you have any con, does Jeff have any comments on, this is not, we're about to write them a letter, so maybe if it included something.
Well, I think, first of all, first of all, they haven't, they haven't finished final design drawings yet.
No.
Okay, so, yeah, right, so-
Some of what they're waiting for is this letter.
Right, that's one. But the next step would be to give us a final design input, comments on final design? Well, that's, that's typical.
It's typical, and it makes sense, and that, when I sent my email to him, asking about street trees, et cetera, I was asking for more, us to have more input.
Landscape design probably hasn't even been started yet.
Right.
No, but I talked to them a lot, just at this hearing, and a lot after the hearing, too, and they were very open to, not the, the public, public, whatever it was closed, but, but requests and input from the town specifically, they were very, I think they're willing to accept them sort of at any point.
There's no question, so what we did on Route 1 North was, we had requested, in the letter, requested MDOT at the appropriate time have a meeting with the select board of Camden, nickel, with the design status. That's what we did and commented on the design of Route 1 North. And then D O T will do it.
We can do that, if you want to do it. Seems like, seems like a fairly minor project for something like that, but-
Sending them stuff in the interim, like, it's at the point where we should be, like, we want a street tree here, here, and here, and we want whatever smarter people than I, that can think of, I think we should just listen to Jeff for a second, just because-
Jeff, you want to say something? So quiet here.
Thank you, just a couple of things. One is, I suspect, Jeff Scott, Chair of the Pathways Committee, I suspect that MDOT would say any bump out would be beyond the scope of this project. would say any bump out would be beyond the scope of this project. That's what they would say. The concept of a bump out, though, is a slightly different question, and I was just looking because I didn't remember it as part of the downtown design proposal, and they didn't specify anything there, but it's actually sort of a gap in the plan, saying that. And the third, the third item commenting on it is that at this, at the information meeting, no, at the Select Board meeting following the information meeting, you guys asked the, asked me to put together recommendations that we would bring back to the Select Boards, particularly about streetscaping, having to do with it, and, and the reason we needed to get back to it was not because of the trees, but because of the possible planters, the cuts in the, we didn't know. So that's, that's a feature, and thank you, Jeremy, for doing that. And where we are on that is Conservation Commission doesn't feel they have a, well, sorry, at the last Pathways Committee meeting, everybody, everybody had input and said, we should do this collaboratively, and so we reached, reached out to the Downtown Design Group, and Deb Chapman has provided.
Deb Dodge or Deb Chapman?
Deb Dodge, sorry, not Deb Chapman, Deb Dodge.
Deb too, right?
I know. Provided two representatives from the Downtown Design Group. There are three from the Pathways Committee, and I've reached out to the Garden Club, who has a downtown design and a tree plan, and they are meeting on the 12th of this month, and after that, they will have a couple of people, and we owe you something by the beginning of September, is my understanding.
Yeah, and we may, we may need that a little sooner than.
Yeah, that's making me really nervous. This needed to be like a quick and dirty kind of thing.
Yeah, well.
Like, isn't it just, this is what always happens, you send it a quick minute, and then it turns into such a big thing, and everybody has so much input that it's like the result is that.
We're hoping, I told them, like, two hours and we're done, and that's it.
On the 12th?
No, not on the 12th. The 12th is when they specify two people, and then I just have to pull these six, eight people together, and we'll meet for two hours, it'll be done.
Then what if you say something crazy that's like, we don't even, I don't know, that, can you, can you just more quickly?
I don't think it's coming that fast.
Yeah, I mean.
He wanted this within a couple of weeks, and it's been like three or three plus weeks, four weeks on this.
Well, they're trying to finalize civil design first.
Why don't I, why don't I, in an email tomorrow, ask him when the latest date that we can give them comments on design?
Design input, design input.
Streetscaping.
Can you also just speak to the general philosophy, but would, independently of whether DOT would agree to this or not, are all bump outs a good thing in your mind?
Generally, we're.
Or how about just there? Would it be good there or somewhere?
Generally, the, the, the less time that people are in the.
Street.
Street is better. And, and bump outs were specified down in the crazy intersection area.
And they are.
Right in downtown, and they are in the plan, and, and I don't know if they're doing much this time, because it's beyond the scope.
I'm not sure it would be such a problem, and I can ask the question, it generally would be a problem if you're.
If it's a curb.
If it's a curb, well, and dealing with the drainage, so it really depends on how the drainage is currently flowing in that area.
I think there's a way that it can be done, and also, it creates an issue with plowing.
Plowing.
So there's a way that it can be done, so that it's not hindering any of those.
It's an issue, though, because we're trying to get more green, storm, whatever, and.
We've got to be careful, just don't pick on the item of the month club, you know, so you have an item with a bump out, great, and then next month, next two weeks, we have an item with something else, you know, there needs to be a mechanism from which we can have a proactive discussion with MDOT over the design, and an opportunity to make comments in it somehow.
At once. So, so again, on the.
They're trying to complete a design here, and I'm.
Supposed to have to bid, I think, this fall.
The Select Board should have a workshop, and then.
I thought it was spring.
I think it's, I thought it was this fall.
You could be right, because they want to start in spring.
Yeah.
Probably late fall. I would expect late fall, when they get the bad news on the price. But I, but I, but I think, these are all great ideas, I think there's no reason not doing it, it's just, I'm just wrestling with the mechanism to most effectively do it,